Meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in the chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Louis Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber. And Counselor Worrell. A quorum is present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I want to thank our clerk, our assistant clerk, and our chinographer for being here. And I also want to thank Aleja Jimenez-Haramillo from the Do-It Office who is here with us today to help try to improve the clerk's office and now everyone's ability to use the tools that we have, the Do-It tools that we have, electronic tools like Veranicus, a lot more efficiently. So, thank you for joining us and being with us here today, Aleja. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Rabbi Yitzhak Aharon Korf, who will be providing our invocation invited by Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor. After the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Rabbi, could you join us, please? So, many of you know when I get this opportunity to invite in clergy, Rabbi, you are always one of my choices. So, I have introduced him many times. And I spend a lot of time, if you've listened in the past, reading his bio, his past, all of his degrees, and all of the amazing things he's done. And I asked him if it would be okay if I just spoke from the heart today. I'm not going to mention all of his education and his titles because the reason why I feel a connection with Rabbi Korf and feel, you know, he's a spiritual friend of mine is because he's just kind and he shows up for this, all of the residents in the city of Boston. He shows up for our firefighters, for our first responders. But he's also a family man, a father, a husband, someone who cares so much about making sure that you need to start at home. And when you do the right thing at home, and then when you leave the house and making sure that when people stray or need support, that he's someone. He, I always say, he doesn't answer his cellphone, he doesn't text, but he does reply to emails quickly. So, thank you always for being just an email away. And know that when I do see you out there in the neighborhoods and in the community, you always are bringing such a strong message that I think so many of us need to hear, can never hear it enough. So, I am just so proud to ask you back. You were available. Thank you. Because oftentimes, you may be out of the country doing worldly important things also. So, we're just fortunate today to have you open our meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. It's always good to be here and good to be back. Some of you, I know quite well, have worked with for many years, others not as long. But I look forward to imposing myself on you and working with you as chaplain in any capacity that I can help. So, let us pray. Dear Lord, we seem to be making quite a mess out of the world you created. So, we ask first for your forgiveness and second for your guidance and inspiration that here at such an incredibly important level of government, we may both recognize and fully understand the problems and the issues. And with your help and blessing, O Lord, together as one body, one people, one community, fix what we may have broken and improve what is not broken. We know that as human beings, neither we nor our world nor our government are perfect. So, please grant us the strength and wisdom to do our part insofar as we can, working for our city and our community and with each other cooperatively, with peace, tolerance, understanding, and pure intentions, to make what is wrong right and make better what is already right. May your strength, O Lord, sustain us. May your vision, O Lord, inspire us. May your wisdom, O Lord, guide us. May your power, O Lord, preserve us. May your hand, O Lord, protect us and direct us. And may your love, O Lord, go with us this day and forever. May this be God's will, and let us say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I hope we better use Y, just the Y. Y Acor. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, Grand Rabbi Y Acor. It is a joy to always have you here in chambers with us and for all you do for our city. Mr. Clerk, could you please amend the record to reflect that Counselors Mejia and, I believe, was Weber? Did we get Weber? Okay. That Counselor Mejia is now present and with us. Thank you. We are now on to presentations. We have presentations today honoring Juneteenth. Juneteenth, as we know, is, as we've come to know, is a holiday, a federal holiday that marks when the residents and slave persons in Texas learned of their freedom via the Emancipation Proclamation, but they learned of it two years later by a Union General Order in Galveston, Texas. We don't have a council meeting next week because of the efforts to turn Juneteenth into a federal holiday. And I want to uplift teacher, community advocate, grandmother of Juneteenth, Opal Lee, who was responsible for so much of the advocacy to make Juneteenth a holiday. And today, we have with us two fearless leaders in our city who are going to be honoring Juneteenth alongside of us. The first is Dr. Noel Trent from the Museum of African American History and poet, community activist, spoken word artist, so I could go on and on, Amanda Shay, who will be reading two poems. I would first like to welcome up Dr. Noel Trent up to the dais. Dr. Noel Trent is the president and CEO of the Museum of African American History, where she brings a deep commitment to public history and a passion for preserving and uplifting Black narratives. I was so glad that during Black History Month, we were able to have an incredible panel bringing people to the museum who have never been here before, who had never been there before, to really learn about the rich African American history in Beacon Hill. A Boston native, which is a fun fact, and Howard University graduate, Dr. Trent is a nationally respected museum leader and historian with past roles as the National Civil Rights Museum, the Smithsonian, and the National Park Service. Her work has shaped major exhibitions, community partnerships, and commemorative events both nationally and internationally. I also want to uplift in this very difficult moment, as Rabbi Y Acor stated, we are in a very challenging world right now, and we've been, and it's been getting messier. I want to uplift the museum in Boston as a powerful place that tells the stories and histories of our Black ancestors. On Juneteenth, it becomes even more poignant and necessary, helping us learn about the history of emancipation and why it still matters today. I had the great pleasure of being with Counselor Durkin, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, Mayor Wu, and standing and defending institutions like the Museum of African American History at the museum just about a month ago in light of federal challenges and attacks. The federal government recently pulled half a million dollars in funding, putting its programs and staff at risk. Counselor Worrell filed a resolution here on the council supporting and restating our support of the museum. This is part of a larger trend where the federal administration is trying to silence or cut support for institutions that teach the truth about Black history. At a time when we should be expanding access to these histories, efforts to limit them are especially troubling. I want to remind everyone that protecting places like this museum is essential if we want to truly honor Juneteenth and continue the work of justice. And so, on behalf of the Boston City Council, Dr. Noel Trent, I have this resolution that I'd like to read to you. It's an official resolution presented by Boston City Council President Ruth Louis Jean. Be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Dr. Noel Trent and the Museum of African American History in recognition of your dedication to history and uplifting our Black narratives on Juneteenth and all year round, and your commitment to the Museum of African American History in preserving our story. So, thank you so much, Dr. Trent. Now, if you'd like to say some words, you may.
Thank you. This is a tremendous honor, and I appreciate the recognition for the museum and its legacy as part of Boston's rich cultural heritage landscape. This year marks the 160th anniversary of the Juneteenth holiday, when General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston shortly after the surrender of Confederate General E. Kirby Smith in Galveston Harbor. Granger's reading of the Emancipation Proclamation was a practice performed by many Union generals once it was signed on January 1st, 1863, essentially stating that slaves within any state or designated part of the state, the people whereof shall be in rebellion against the United States shall be then thenceforward and forever free, and the executive government of the United States, including the military and naval authority thereof, will recognize and maintain the freedom of such persons and will do no act or acts to repress such persons or any of them in any effort they may make for their actual freedoms. With these words, enslaved people learned that they were free from bondage. And in many instances, the reading of this proclamation, we cannot fully comprehend the level of exuberance expressed at the hearing of these words. However, it would be a mistake to assume that people waited for a piece of paper. Our own very African meeting house bore witness to numerous people who bravely fled from bondage and, as Frederick Douglass stated, fled with their, used their faith with their legs. These individuals became part of Boston society despite the lack of regard of their human rights and the lack of their citizenship. They created a community here on the northern slope of Beacon Hill, whose stories we proudly share today, and who developed their own ideas and conversations around freedom, the future, and how they would plant trees whose shade they would not sit under. So, Juneteenth this year for the museum is special. It's more than 160th anniversary. It's a time of joyful remembrance and resilience. Over the last few months, we have faced significant challenges. More than the loss of federal funding, there is vocal opposition that seeks to mute us at best and erase us at worst. However, we are undeterred. We refuse to be despondent. We draw strength from the abolitionists who gathered at the meeting house, the parents like Benjamin Roberts, who fought for a better education for their children, and our founder Sue Bailey Thurman, who saw the need and significance of preserving Boston's Black history. So, next week, we will hang the Juneteenth flag created by Boston resident Ben Hayth. We'll celebrate this day with joy, a joy that was stifled, refused to be stifled by gathering ordinances and enslavement over 160 years ago, a joy that radiates in the presence of oppression and hate, and a joy by that, by its very nature, is an act of resistance. We are grateful for the city council, for your ongoing support. As Frederick Douglass stated, "If there is no struggle, there is no progress." And my friends, we are in a struggle. And we hope you will continue to stand with us during this struggle. May your Juneteenth celebration be filled with joy. I invite you to join us at the museum on Juneteenth, as well as on June 30th for the opening of our newest exhibition, Black Voices of the Revolution. Thank you again for this honor, and we will continue to preserve this important legacy
Thank you so much, Dr. Trent, and for all the work that you do. And thank you for reminding us that Juneteenth is really about jubilee and joy, even in the most challenging moments. Yes, well, we're going to take one. Okay. And I also wanted to welcome up Amanda Shay, a two-time Boston Music Award-winning spoken word artist, to join me here at the dais. Amanda is no stranger to City Hall, no stranger to making sure that Black voices in this city are shared and that we are making space for everyone. As I said, she's an artist, a performer, an educator, a publicist, a curator, a roller skater master I saw recently. She co-founded six iterations of Activating, a community festival to amplify POs, people of color through art, activism, and resistance. Her work can be found in the Museum of Fine Arts, the Boston Globe, TEDx, and more. Today, she'll be reading two poems, she'll be delivering two poems, Resilience and Black Excellence. But first, on behalf of the Boston City Council, I wanted to present you with this citation in recognition of your work, this Boston City Council President Ruth Louis Jean. Be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Amanda Shay in recognition of your work as an artist, performer, educator, publicist, and curator, and your ability and tenacity to amplify people of color through art and activism on this Juneteenth and every day of the year. You have the floor.
Good afternoon, everyone. Resilience. When the tough get going, the going get tough. Musta not have met my mama. The scars she bears are invisible. Only those with the third eye could see. You see, her body is strong, agile, but weakened by her experiences. Black women are to only be strong. No complaints, no check-ins, only check-ups to ensure the body is intact. Heavy the head who wears the crown, but I see it slipping. Weight on her shoulders she carries worlds around. We simply orbit in her universe, even when she's lost in her own space. But who, who will carry her burdens? I mean, her anger, her depression, her anxiety, her bipolar, her grief, her wallet. She don't need no partner, but society's price tags tell her different stories. Fairy tales unbeknownst to her fort. She's a doll in a dream mentality. Don't worry, I got this swag. I can do bad all by myself, no two cents to rub together, but she rubbed out meals. Who will nourish her soul? It's tired, been beaten, but not just by life, by family who cast her away, didn't want to help her rewrite her wrongs, running away from generational trauma. She's out of breath. Panic attacks her nervous system. Like a baby she birthed, she self-sues. Resilient. Black and brown women overcome so many obstacles. And when asked, "How are you?", they reply. My mama replies with these replies. I reply, "I'm fine." Black excellence. Our land, the motherland, where the sun illuminates our melanin, we glow different. Afro descendants, fighting oppression in systematic institutions, black magic. We turned into Black Girl Magic. That energy you can feel, we call it vibes. We out here snapping our necks and fingers like, yes. Our voices carry joy. They be like, "How can these people be so liberated when we violate their civil rights and their existence?" We exist in ourselves. Our ancestors, birthed duelers in order to reproduce Black babies that ignite the culture. Natural hair, braided locks, wigs, we weave beauty into sculpted masterpieces. How we speak with our eyes, and we be knowing what that look mean. Call it telepathy. Like how our ancestors speak to us in dreams. How multilingual we are when we say sak base, nabule, que lo que, que lo que hay. What it do, homie? What's up? We complimenting each other like, "Where are you going dressed like that means? You look good." With a T on the end. We embody deities, Afro deity. They tried to abandon us overseas. What they didn't know is we are healing folk, protected by crystals, obsidian, black tumlin. Arishes like emaya carried us to safety, surely providing our fruitful livelihood. Cropping out negativity and planting seeds in the backyards and window sills to feed our families, our chants become monstrous. Ceremonies held in homes and churches and City Hall. Angola, Nigeria, Ghana, Haiti, Igbo people, we are historic. We were buried in gold. We are the definition of royalty. Our music pulsating a frequency that demands you to move. Lauryn Hill, Jill Scott, Kendrick Lamar resonate deeply. We are culturally appropriated, and yet we still act accordingly. We can move things just by standing still. It's cosmic. It's spiritual. It's God. We sprinkle all that razzle-dazzle on everything, no matter societal constraints or tactics. We thrive, period. The epitome of Black excellence.
Thank you, Amanda Shay, for those beautiful, beautiful pieces. And I'm so glad that we have young people in the audience who are here, who are able to hear from you and who are able to hear from Dr. Trent and hopefully feel affirmed and seen in the words that she shared with all of you. And I also, we put out a Juneteenth calendar. My office put out, there's events happening over the next two weeks. Amanda's going to be at a lot of them. So, make sure that you come out and support and celebrate the day of jubilee that is Juneteenth. And I'd like to call up Dr. Trent and my colleagues so we can take a photo. Really appreciate it. And I think, again, there are going to be more events, so I hope that folks really do go out and support all the Juneteenth events, including the raising of the Juneteenth flag here at City Hall. Also, I think we sent this email out in my office, but we will be having a lunch and learn after with Roka, featuring Roka, which will be catered by Rhythm and Raps from Austin, a Black-owned restaurant. So, I hope all of my colleagues are able to join.
Thanks.
Counselor Mejia is asking that I shout out the exact school that is here with us today. And I want to welcome to the school, I want to welcome to the City Hall and to our chambers, Everett Edward School Youth Visit. Thank you so much for being with us in chambers. I love this. I love this because technically, we're not supposed to clap in chambers, and this is a really great alternative. So, thank you so much for being here. And I hope you know that this is your City Hall, and our doors are always open to you. So, thank you for being with us. And we hope you too are able to make it out to celebrate some of the many Juneteenth events that are happening between now and June 21st. So, thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, do I need to amend the record for any? Okay. Yes. Mr. Clerk, would you please amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Brian Worrell is now present and with us? Okay. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of June 4, 2025. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the June 4 meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from our honor of the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docuets number 1188 through 1190?
Docuet number 1188, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $1,271,380.38 in the form of a grant for the WIOA Youth Program Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund the comprehensive youth employment programs to serve eligible youth ages 14 to 24 who face barriers to education, training, and employment. Docuet number 1189, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $423,132 in the form of a grant awarded by the United States Department of the Treasury, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund and support job seekers by providing staffing at the Mass Higher Career Centers to help them enroll in education and training programs funded by UPR Upskill. Docuet number 1190, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $351,51,850.85 in the form of a grant for the KERYN RESEA Program for Field CY24 Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund individual reemployment needs of unemployment insurance payments as well as prevent and detect improper benefit payments and application assistance for training and education resources and programs.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you for visiting us, Edward Everett. I hope you had a good time here at City Hall. Thank you. Docuets number 1188 through 1190 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docuet number 1191?
Docuet number 1191, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $229,879.74 in the form of a grant for the Shared Street and Spaces Grant awarded by the Mass Department of Transportation, to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund safety, infrastructure, design, and construction for a more accessible Good Earl Square.
Thank you, the Chair. And as is Counselor Durkin, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, you have the floor.
You might be asking where Good Earl Square is. It's in East Boston. I have, my team has spoken with the district counselor, and she's supportive of moving this grant forward. It's to deal with disability and accessibility concerns. So, it's an important grant. It is under $230,000. So, I was looking to pass this today. If there is any opposition, I do have a hearing that I can fit this into. I just want to make sure that we're moving fast on small accessibility concerns, so I ask for its suspend and pass today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. Is anyone looking to speak on this matter? Counselor Durkin seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docuet number 1191. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docuet is passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read Docuets number 1192 through 1201? It's a lot of reading. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Docuet number 1192, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant for the Boston Climate Jobs Alliance Grant awarded by the Citizens Bank Foundation Community Relations, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund critical outreach and job coaching for workers and training to ensure placement into jobs that enhance climate resilience as part of the Boston Climate Jobs Alliance. Docuet number 1193, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $125,000 in the form of a grant from the Liberty Mutual Climate Resiliency Grant awarded by Liberty Mutual Foundation Incorporated, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund mitigative and adaptive approaches to climate change by supporting innovative solutions, scaling proven strategies, and promoting nature-based initiatives. This funding empowers grassroots efforts to tackle environmental challenges. Docuet number 1194, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $77,122.35 in the form of a grant, the KERYN WIOA Dislocated Workers Administration Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor. Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund administrative costs associated with providing programming to help dislocated workers get back to work as quickly as possible and overcome barriers to employment. Docket number 1195, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $70,000 in the form of a grant from the Friends of Youth Opportunity Boston, awarded by State Street Global Advisors, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund young people ages 14 to 24, an opportunity to work and learn along with intensive staff support. Docket number 1196, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $60,573.35 in the form of a grant for the KERYN WIOA Adult Administration Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund administrative costs associated with Boston's Mass Higher Career Centers, which help resident adult job seekers access employment, education, job training, apprenticeship, and support services. Docket number 1197, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $50,027.55 in the form of a grant for the, from the Department of Transitional WPP Grant awarded by Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund employment and training assistance, career counseling, and job search assistance for individuals in need who receive cash assistance, food assistance, and housing assistance to help transition from temporary to self-efficiency. Docket number 1198, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $34,349.36 in the form of a grant for the KERYN Regional Planning Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services to be funded. The grant will fund regional planning efforts to address the creation of regional pipeline programming for high-demand industries and occupations in alignment with regional planning priorities. Docket number 1199, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $8,943.77 in the form of a grant awarded by the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund employment and training assistance, career counseling, and job search assistance for disabled individuals who are clients at Boston Mass Higher Career Centers. Docket number 1200, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $3,074.94 in the form of a grant for the SCSEP Grant awarded by the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund employment and training assistance, career counseling, and job search assistance for older adults and individuals with disabilities who are clients at Boston's Mass Higher Career Centers. Docket number 1201, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,861.8 in the form of a grant for the Trade Adjustment Assistance Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund reemployment services to workers who have lost their jobs or experienced a reduction in hours and wages due to increased imports or shifts in production outside the United States.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for all that reading. Thank you. Dockets number 1192 through 1201 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, can you please read dockets number 1202 through 1204?
Docket number 1202, communication was received from the mayor in regards to the fiscal year 2026 budget that has taken effect. Docket number 1203, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Andrea Carruth as Director of the Department of Supplier Diversity effective June 9th, 2025. And docket number 1204, communication was received from Dr. Samuel DePina, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Boston Public Schools, transferring certain information under Section 17F relative to conduct and safety procedures and policies for the Boston Public Schools in District 3. On docket number 1142, passed by the council on June 4th, 2025.
Thank you. These dockets will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1205?
Docket number 1205, the Constable Barnes of Ruth Baez-Valdez, Russell C. Castagna, Derek Hughes, and Mark Weisberg have been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer and were received.
Thank you. The Constable Barnes of Ruth Baez-Valdez, Russell C. Castagna, Derek Hughes, and Mark Weisberg, having been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer, were received and approved under the usual terms and conditions. Okay, we are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0394?
Docket number 0394, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, which was referred on February 5th, 2025. Docket number 0394, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,735,107.39 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 25 Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegration programs. submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Oh, Mr. Clerk, could you please update the record to reflect that Counselor Finnegan Anderson is now present and with us? Thank you. Mr. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on docket number 0394 on Friday, April 25th, 2025. As the clerk shared, this docket is a message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the FY25 Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative Grant, more commonly known as the Shannon Grant. The FY25 grant is the amount of $1,735,107.39. This matter was sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu and referred to the committee on February 5th, 2025. We were joined by my colleagues, Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor John Fitzgerald, Council President Bruce Lee Jen, and Counselor Murphy. We also received letters of absence from Counselor Pepe and from Counselor Roerel, who is the committee vice chair. The Shannon Grant is an investment initiative that supports the city of Boston's comprehensive public safety strategy using regional and multidisciplinary approaches and collaborations amongst various state and city agencies, along with partnerships with faith-based philanthropics and business organizations within the community. Since 2015, the city of Boston has used a competitive RFP process, opening applications to nonprofits, community organizations, and government programs with a vested community interest in addressing and responding to youth violence. This process is now part of the annual funding cycle, which has received over 50 applications per year. I want to extend my appreciation to Demond Bills for his leadership through this process each year as the project coordinator for the Shannon Grant in the city of Boston's Police Department. Under Demond's leadership, BPD has expanded its partnership with community organizations each of the last several years. Demond joined us for the hearing to testify on behalf of the administration. Last year, we held a productive and insightful public hearing in this committee to conduct oversight of the FY24 Shannon Grant. We were joined by Demond and Director Shevers, along with representatives of the Boston Public Health Commission, Boston Centers for Youth and Families, and the Boston Police Department, who each implement some of the programs funded in part by the Shannon Grant. That hearing led to a successful passage by the city council of the order to accept and expend the FY24 Shannon Grant. During that hearing, we also learned that since the inception of this grant in 2006 through the end of 2023, BPD has seen a 16% decrease in homicides, a 9% decrease in aggravated assaults, and a 10% decrease in total violent crime, all through the investments of $350 per young person. Based on helpful feedback from my colleagues after last year's hearing, I wanted to expand the oversight of the FY25 Shannon Grant to provide an opportunity for each and every one of the 27 non-BPD programs that will be funded by this grant this year to share to the council about their mission and work. I was honored, I'm honored to have had all of those 27 organizations connect with me and my office about participating in the hearing. We had a very informative and insightful hearing for nearly three hours with nearly all of the nonprofits and community organizations who stand to receive funds from the Shannon, from the Shannon Grant, joining us in person or virtually, and the remaining handful providing either a pre-recorded video or written testimony. In many cases, we also heard testimony directly from youth and community members who are directly impacted by these programs. The 27 non-BPD organizations that stand to receive funds from this grant, should the council approve it, and who the committee heard from for this hearing are Apprentice Learning, Boston Medical Center, Boston Centers for Youth and Families, the Boston Housing Authority, Boston Public Health Commission, Center for Teen Empowerment, Fathers Uplift, Freedom House, Future Shafts, High Square Task Force, Justice Resource Initiative, the Louise D. Brown Peace Institute, Madison Park Development Corporation, the Maverick Landing Community Service, Mothers for Justice and Equality, Project Right Inc., Roka, Suffolk County DA's Office, Sportsmen's Tennis, St. Stevens Youth Program, Urban Guide, Veronica Robles, Robles Cultural Center, Young Man with a Plan, Youth Guidance, BAM, WOW, Youth Options Unlimited, Boston, Youth Build Boston, and Youth Connect. We also heard public testimony from several students from BPS Community Academy and JP, who joined us in person to share their perspectives on public and community safety and how they hope to see these funds from this grant and other programs used. I want to extend my appreciation to those students as well as their teachers, Mansur Buffins, who accompanied them and provided public testimony as well. I also want to extend my appreciation to Cora Montreux from Central Office for her assistance in preparing the committee report for this hearing. We received a tremendous amount of information at this hearing from the testimony of the 27 organizations I just listed, as well as information shared by Demond Bills about the grant administration process and the funds that would be used for BPD programs, and our committee report details of all the information with a overview of each program and funding amount. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At that time, our recommendation to the full council will be to, will be acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0394. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for holding this hearing. It was great to hear from the recipients about what the grant does and why this is important for us to continue supporting, and it was a good model, the work that you're doing on the Shannon Grant. So just wanted to thank you for that. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the, thank the chair, Counselor Santana, for a very informative hearing. I was there for the entire three hours, listening, really listening to the recipients that received this money, this award. And that was the critical part of this hearing, is having the opportunity to listen and learn about what impact this funding is actually having on an organization and on individuals. Again, want to say thank you to Counselor Santana for conducting a very professional meeting to the award recipients that are receiving money for the Shannon Grant, also for talking about your particular program. And again, it was a three-hour session, and for those counselors that weren't there, I would recommend watching the video because it, you'll really learn a lot about the tremendous nonprofits and city agencies that are doing exceptional work across the city of Boston. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the chair, Santana. I just wanted to rise to say thank you for reaching out to the organizations also. I know many of them were here, like Youth Build and, you know, BCYF and others who received these grants. And I did just want to say how it was good timing that at the same time Counselor Flynn was hosting about 50 students from the Condon School, so they were able to come into chamber after you were finished and talk to you and us about, you know, a lot of these grants that do directly affect our youth. So thank you for this, looking forward to passing it.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their, oh, okay. Counselor Santana seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0394. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted and docket number 0394 has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read dockets number 0888, 0889, 0885, and 0886?
Docket number 0888, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which was referred on April 16th, 2025. Docket number 0888, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $4 million in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 25 Housing for Persons with AIDS awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the mayor's office of housing. The grant will fund services for income-eligible individuals and families affected by AIDS. The award amount is estimated from prior years. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket number 0889, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which was referred on April 16th, 2025. Docket number 0889, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2 million in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 25 Emergency Solutions Grant awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the mayor's office of housing. The grant will fund the street outreach, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing assistance, and shelter services. The award amount is estimated from prior years. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket number 0885, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which was referred on April 16th, 2025. Docket number 0885, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $18 million in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 25 Community Development Block Grant awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the mayor's office of housing. The grant will fund housing, economic development, and social services programs. The award amount is estimated from prior years. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. And docket number 0886, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which was referred on April 16th, 2025. Docket number 0886, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $6 million in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 25 Home Investment Partnerships Program Grant awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the mayor's office of housing. The grant will fund the production of new affordable rental and homeownership housing and also provide operating support for community development corporations. The award amount is estimated from prior years. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. These month, as we heard, these matters were sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu and referred to the committee on April 16th. The four dockets are a collection of New United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD grants distributed by the federal government and administered by the mayor's office of housing. The authorizations are not to exceed amounts, as the actual totals are not available when the dockets are filed. The city has since been informed of the actual amounts to be awarded, which remains within the not-to-exceed amount for each docket. These HUD programs are level-funded by a continuing resolution passed by Congress earlier this year, and each of the grant allocations is expected to see a modest reduction in funding compared to the previous program year. Many of these are recurring grants, so we've been familiar with them from other years. The- years. The Community Development Block Grant allocation is $16,948,744, and Housing and Equity Office of Workshop, Workforce Development, and Small and Local Business Program of the Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, to support home buyer education, down payment assistance, housing rehabilitation, rental housing development, job training, and economic development. The Home Investment Partnership Program home allocation is $4,943,764. Massachusetts, the Mayor's Office of Housing administers all home funds for eligible activities, which include housing construction and rehabilitation, and funds will support the production of new affordable rental and homeownership programs. The Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, HOPOA, is $3,649,543. Mayor's Office of Housing administers this fund for all of Norfolk, Suffolk, and Plymouth Counties. Eligible activities include the construction and rehabilitation of housing for persons with AIDS, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, housing information services, permanent housing placement services, short-term rent, mortgage, and utility assistance, and technical assistance. The Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, allocation is $1,511,334. The Mayor's Office of Housing administers all of these ESG funds, which may be used for five program components: street outreach, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing, and the homelessness management information system. The grants and committee are, were discussed in general terms by the Mayor's Office of Housing at the Ways and Means Financial Year 26 Budget Hearing on the evening of May 19, 2025. Additionally, as Chair, I requested and received supplemental information from the Mayor's Office of Housing regarding the grants which has been incorporated into the reports submitted. Given that federal grant programs are level funded by Congress, and in light of a continuing uncertainty surrounding future federal support from municipalities, I believe the prompt authorization of these grants is in the best interest of the city. As Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, I recommended that these matters ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Would anyone like to speak on these dockets? Okay. Thank you. The Chair, the Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0888. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted and docket number 0888 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0889. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted and docket number 0889 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0885. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted and docket number 0885 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0886. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted and docket number 0886 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1187? Okay. Oh, Mr. Clerk, could you please amend the attendance record to reflect that Counsel Clata Zapata is now present and with us? I apologize. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1187? You could, yeah, you could just say it.
Docket number 1187 will remain in committee.
Thank you. Docket number 1187 shall remain in committee. We are now on to matters recently heard. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0266 and 0423?
Docket number 0266, order for a hearing to discuss pedestrian safety, traffic calming, and expanding the safety surge program in the city of Boston. And docket number 0423, order for a hearing to review the effectiveness of speed humps in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin, the Chair of the Committee on Public, on, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. On Monday, June 9, I chaired a hearing on dockets 0266 and 024, sorry, 0423, discussing pedestrian safety, traffic calming, and expanding the safety surge program in the city of Boston, and reviewing the effectiveness of speed humps in the city respectively. 0266 was sponsored by Counselors Flynn, Fitzgerald, and Santana. 0423 was sponsored by Counselors Murphy, Flynn, and Peppin. We were joined by my colleagues, Counselors Flynn, Murphy, Fitzgerald, Peppin, Braden, Counselor Clata Zapata, and Counselor Mejia. We also received letters of absence from Counsel President Lucy Louis-Jen and Counselor Weber, who's had a, had someone graduating from high school that day, so. He also filed a similar hearing order that will be heard later this year. To provide more information and testimony, we were joined by Chief Franklin Hodge, the Streets Cabinet, Commissioner Nick Gove from BTD, Julia Campbell, Deputy Chief of Infrastructure and Design, Lydia Housley, Capital Projects Design Director for the Streets Cabinet, and AB Cording, Director of Engineering. The panel provided a short presentation highlighting Boston's Vision Zero goals, the safety surge program, reforms around safer signals, and further detailed around the speed hump program. The safety of our streets is of paramount importance. It is a topic of every single resident and elected official has it at top of mind every day as we walk out of our homes. The first hearing order is focused on expanding and refining the city's safety surge program, an ambitious initiative launched in 2023 meant to reduce fatalities and serious injuries. The second hearing called for data-driven review of speed humps, one of the most visible tools in our traffic calming toolkit. The panel's testimony was full of facts, information, and guidance around what's working, what isn't, and where we can make future improvements. One of my favorite recommendations from Counsel Fitzgerald was that every district counselor be able to decide where some speed humps happen, so I'm sure we'll, we'll be following up on that as well. Reflecting the importance of this topic to our constituents, with the host of residents who joined us was a great experience, and I look forward to more conversations around this topic. As the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, based on the testimony we provided, my recommendation to the full council is that this ought to stay in committee, and maybe be heard another time with the other docket that is relevant to this topic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Dockets number 0266 and 0423 remain in committee, and congratulations to Counsel Weber's son, who was graduating from Boston Arts Academy. Mr. Clerk, could you please read dockets number 0124 and 0727?
Docket number 0124, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Jay Andres Bernal as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring July 1, 2027. And docket number 0727, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Lisa Tharp as a primary member of the Back Bay Architectural District Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2028.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yesterday, I presided over nominations hearing with two dockets, Andre Spernel, who is being appointed to be an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeal, and Lisa Tharp for the role as primary member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission. Both are highly qualified. I was joined by my colleagues, Counselors Flynn, Fitzgerald, Clata Zapata, Braden, and Counselor Lucy Louis-Jen, Counsel President Lucy Louis-Jen. As District 8 City Council, I'm proud to represent four out of the 10 historical architectural districts, and so it was my privilege to oversee Ms. Tharp's nomination, as she will be tasked with safeguarding the architectural heritage of one of the city's and District 8's most iconic neighborhoods. Ms. Tharp is an impeccable designer, and she's deeply committed. My recommendation is that we move her forward, and that, to the full council, that she be confirmed. Similarly, with Andre Spernel, as I mentioned yesterday, the ZBA is one of the most consequential nominated bodies in Boston. As such, I was heartened by the vigor, vigorous discussion we had within reviewing Mr. Bernal's qualifications and motivation to serve on the board and help guide Boston towards a more abundant future, hopefully. I want to reiterate why nominations to the ZBA are important. Planning Department analysis of 2023 highlighted how Boston, by every form and comparison of cities of considerable size, have, has significantly longer and more convoluted zoning code, and our code is 40% longer than NYC's, which is 13 times our population and six times our land area. So I thought that we needed, and we should, for every ZBA member, have a rigorous discussion. Was glad that we had that yesterday. Throughout the hearing, Mr. Bernal answered our questions and had, with thoughtfulness and poise, so my recommendation to the full council is that his appointment ought to be confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. And you be separately speaking on Lisa Tharp?
I just.
Okay, 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 you covered both. Okay, great. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I was at the meeting and spoke and asked questions on docket 0124, on docket 0727. Both are exceptional and will provide exceptional leadership, both to the Zoning Board and to the Back Bay Architectural District Commission. Let me just highlight Lisa Tharp. I listened closely to her, and, and, and in her opening comments, she talked about that she wanted to focus on accessibility in the Back Bay, and I was really excited to hear that, and I had a wonderful conversation with her about how we can ensure that all neighborhoods, but certainly the Back Bay, is accessible to persons with disabilities. I know she's going to be a tremendous asset for persons with disabilities in the, in the Back Bay area. I'm proud to represent part of the Back Bay, part of, part of Beacon Hill, so I look forward to supporting and voting in favor of both of these dockets. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on these matters? Okay, the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Planning, Development, and Transportation seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0124. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted and docket number 0124 has passed. The appointment has been confirmed. The Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0727. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted and docket number 0727 has passed. The appointment has been confirmed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0176?
Docket number 10176, order for a hearing on government accountability, transparency, and accessibility of decision-making protocols in city government.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Post-Audit Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank my colleagues, Counselor, my co-sponsors, first of all, Counselor Anderson and Counselor Worrell for sponsoring the hearing that we held last night, and I want to thank both Counselor Murphy, Counselor Flynn, Counsel Peppin, and Counselor President Louis-Jen for showing up and being there with us, and it was a, it was a much-needed conversation. For those who know, in 2022, our office hosted a town hall in regards to the issue of the redesign on Blue Hill Ave., and we gave the administration a lot of feedback of what community engagement could look like to ensure that the voices of the people were being heard. What we've learned since then is that some folks still feel like we need to do a better job at doing just that, so the hearing provided an opportunity to get a lot of folks on the record on some of the things that they have felt neglected to be heard on, and so I'm looking forward to keeping this in committee and hosting a second hearing just for public testimony and doing so virtually, so that we can give more people an opportunity to voice their, their concerns and keep the dialogue going as it, from what I understand, there are a lot of businesses, butters, you know, churchgoers who are really concerned about the way that the process has been going, and I want to make sure that we're doing everything in our power to create space for people to be heard. So I plan on doing just one listening session for public testimony and doing so virtually because more folks need to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and want to say thank you to Counsel Mejia, the Chair of the committee, the Chair of the meeting, for a very good job last night, her professionalism last night in organizing and managing this hearing. It was an important hearing. I had the opportunity to stay for the entire listening part, public testimony. That's what I really came to hear, listening to residents. Obviously, it's not my district, but it's important for me to be informed, and I had a good idea from residents on exactly what the challenges are with the, with the project. I won't get into the specifics. Again, it's not my district, and I don't think it's appropriate for me to weigh in all that much, but I do want to acknowledge Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, for being there, and, and other district counselors for being there and listening to all of the concerns of concerned residents last night, it was important to hear from them directly. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counsel Mejia. I know I said it last night, but ever since you've been on this council, you've always tried to make sure that the community's voice feels that they're heard, and so thank you for giving the community a platform. It was a much-needed opportunity for them to share their concerns, many of them were concerns, and feeling as though they have not been listened to, and that things are going to move forward without them being able to have a say going forward. I did just want to stand to thank our central staff, Ron, Ethan, and Candace, who were there last night, who, when we step outside of this chamber and we step outside of City Hall, we do open ourselves up to have a harder time to manage what we have, the, you know, the backup and supports we have here in City Hall. So thank you for being so professional, for being, you know, I can't say enough, so want to apologize if any of them felt as though this put them in a position where they did not feel safe or did not feel as though they were being treated well, so I did just want to put that out there. But in no way do I think going forward, we should stop having community meetings out in the community. We just need to think through, if needed, if we have any backup plans that would help support that, so thank you.
Thank you. And I, and I also want to echo big thanks for central staff. I was there early as they were setting up, and they were doing incredible work, and they are centering, I want to thank Meredith Tuitt and the, and the American Legion for, for, for being there, for letting us house the meeting there, but also want to echo Ron and Candace, y'all are amazing, and I, and Michelle, and everyone who was involved in making sure that everyone was good, and, you know, I always want to remind everyone that public service, you know, we're elected and the people who support us warrant, but still often have to interface with the public, and so I just want to uplift central staff, and want to uplift Meredith, Meredith Tuitt, and everyone involved in making sure that we could have this event in community. Again, it takes a lot of resources and all right for people to go out and be in community, and they get there early and they're set up, so thank you to Ron, to Candace, to Ethan, and to all of the members of central staff who were there. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Chair, for hosting the hearing in the community. I had been trying to file for a while, and then I, you know, asked if you could take it on because you've been leading in this, on this issue for a while, and I appreciate you. You know that half of that project is in District 7. I share it with Counselor Worrell, and I guess a bit with Counselor Peppin. Am I correct?
A big chunk of it.
A big chunk of it. And so the issue, I think, all started, and I, and I like to put it in context because I, I think I'm just here to speak with, to my constituents on this. The issue here that has all started with this Blue Hill Ave. master plan, and it didn't start with the congressional funds, it started before us, and so the continuation of the ongoing several years of planning for this project has, I think, has left this sort of residual feeling in the community that the community engagement has not been transparent or has been inclusive enough. And so the community has been asking and protesting, and then created sort of, you know, a change.org kind of, you know, for lack of better terms, kind of site or movement where there's been over 1,000 signatures opposing this project. Mayor Wu called us into the Eagle Room, and she had, she debriefed us on the project where state representatives were there. There, I remember Russell Holmes and I think, so Rep. Holmes and Rep. Flucker and maybe someone else were all there, and in that meeting specifically, only myself and Counselor Worrell and Rep. Worrell voiced, I'm sure people, other people had questions, but only the three of us voiced that concerns about the project, specifically saying, "We cannot go to your press conference, we cannot support this because the community has been expressing that they're opposing it." We were told then that it was optional, it was not required or mandatory in order to make the middle lane in order to expend these $15 million funds, congressional funds, that... that as long as it prioritized transit or improved transit or the bus lanes, that it would be, that was one of the requirements, and we could do a side lane. Yesterday, we heard from the Transportation Department Chief Franklin Hodge that at this point, a decision was being made, and I'm quoting him. And so it left the constituents with further confusion because who made the decision? Obviously, Mayor Wu made the decision and wants this middle lane. And the community saying, "Well, we've been telling you we don't want that." A disenfranchised community that looks dilapidated, blight, and completely ignored. Now there's funding. Just improve it for us so that we can boost its economy, add foot traffic, and support its small businesses. Why not listen to us? Okay, so carbon and climate resiliency and all of that came into play. Absolutely, we want that. We like bike lanes. We like all of that stuff. But not when it encroaches, so much so that it displaces black and brown businesses down Blue Hill Avenue. And so the conversation is supposed to be going back and forth. Yesterday, you heard somewhat of a compromise where Chief Franklin Hodge talked about that the bike lane was optional and that they will not do it if the community says no. So it's important to go on record to document these things because if you're not going to do it, if you're saying the community, if the community doesn't want it, you're not going to do it. It is important for the community to know. In addition to that, he also stated that it's no longer losing 40% of parking. It's only 10%, preserving 90% of the parking, which is super important. So I'm looking forward to the conversation in the future, to whatever, wherever capacity I'm in, because we have to build continuity to whatever they're saying. How are we monitoring and measuring this? And tracking from what they say first and then what they say second to what's today is important for the progress of this project. The other thing, of course, it's the meeting itself. I think when you disenfranchise a community and you come into a community, and look, Charlestown, everybody, white, black, doesn't matter. Everybody gets ghetto behind when it comes to these meetings. So let's not act like it was, you went to Matapan and things got chaotic and people got disrespected. I've heard of meetings like this. I've been to meetings everywhere, Brighton, also Brighton, Charlestown, North End. It doesn't matter. Back Bay, everybody gets angry and disorderly. When people are upset, people show their frustration and their emotions, and understandably so. And I think Counselor Mejia did a great job trying to manage that. And just to echo some of my colleagues, I went on the mic and I apologize on behalf of the council to Ron, who did a stupendous job, professional, and who responded to a constituent who was a bit irate. So and Ethan, who we forgot, and Candace, who all were there supporting us. I think that the counselors who stayed, Counselor Worrell, Counselor Mejia, and colleagues who remained, I thank you even if it's not in your district. But it's interesting how we play on words. You will completely oppose things that Mayor Wu does when it suits you, but then you have to think about it, and you're not necessarily taking a position when you know that you have to coddle unions with these city departments. Let's try to be at least honest about what that means. If it hurts the community in a black community and you say you care about equity, let's be consistent across the board when you're opposing Wu's stuff. Let's not oppose Wu because we don't like her, we don't want her. Let's oppose it when it doesn't make sense. Let's support it. And I don't, and you guys know, I don't care. Says resign, it doesn't matter. I will support Mayor Wu's policies as long as it helps my district, no matter what. There's no pettiness in this game. It's about the people. It's not about us. So let's act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Mejia, as the chair, I'll allow you to speak, and then we're going to move on. Okay? The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I wanted to just acknowledge just, and I've said this before, is that when we host things that are incredibly emotionally charged, it is because even in this chamber, like, we have to have a level of emotional intelligence and understanding that people, when we come, when we create spaces, because so many people have not felt heard or seen or affirmed. And so I think we, as facilitators of these conversations, are well set up to really be able to channel that energy in a way that people can, so that we can affirm them. And I think that we get the brunt of people's anger because we're the ones that are stepping up and creating space for people to speak truth to power, and they assume that we are the power when actually we're not. And so we get the wrath of the folks because what we're trying to do is create space to speak up. And I want to thank the folks that did show up. We had over six pages of public testimony, and people stayed to speak. And some of them went over allotted time because, and I know Counselor Anderson has said this before, the constructs and the way that we operate really isn't set up for people to really be heard. So there's the timer, there's this, there's that. So I think trying to manage all of those things as chairs, especially when we're doing things that are highly contentious, we have to really start thinking about how we create space and thinking about how we respect voice. And I think that one lesson in that was yesterday. You know, we had Luisa Lisa speaking, and the timer was going off. We had Omar, who was speaking, and the timer was going off. And both of my colleagues were like, "Let them speak." And I do, I always want people to speak. And then people were getting mad because they didn't get that opportunity. But at the end of the day, y'all, at the end of the day, when we host these hearings, our jobs are to create space for people to be heard. And more importantly, what people want us to do is when we hear what they want, our job is to fight for what they want, not to act like we listen and then we don't act. And so as it relates to this particular issue, it is clear to me, based on the testimony that we heard yesterday, that people have not been heard or they don't want it. And I think that we are well positioned to utilize our microphones to really help support a process in which we are doing our due diligence. And one member of the public mentioned that regardless of whether or not your, this particular issue is not in your district, that we are a body of 13, and whatever votes we take on this body impacts Dorchester, Roxbury, and Matapan. So I really want everybody to start recognizing that your votes do matter in this chamber, and your votes do impact the livelihood of the city as a whole. So I'm glad that you, for those who were there, thank you. For those who missed it, I would recommend that you watch the tape and listen and learn, and more importantly, do something about it.
Thank you. There is no speaking from members of the public at council meetings. Thank you. This docket, docket number 0176, shall remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Reminder for sponsoring colleagues that you will have three minutes to speak on a docket that you are offering. Co-sponsors or other counselors will have two minutes apiece to speak on a docket. Mr. Clerk, and, Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1206?
Docket number 1206, Counselor Coletta Zapata offered the following. Ordinance amending the City of Boston Code, Section 6-6.3, schedule of parking fines.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to apologize to my colleagues that I was late. We had the Hero Square unveiling for Major General Warren, something that this council passed earlier this year, and we did it as a part of Pride Week, so I apologize for my tardiness. For this particular docket, I'm really excited about it. This came directly from the community and letting the community lead on an issue that they deal with every single day. The North End is one of the most densely populated neighborhoods in the city with limited on-street parking. This is exacerbated by thousands of visitors to the TD Garden who seek to park on our streets without having to pay a garage or lot fee. They're essentially paying, playing a game and betting that our parking enforcement officers will not ticket them. The problem is that when a visitor parks in residential spots and they play this lottery and they take that chance, even when they lose, the ticket is still less than what they would pay in a garage or in a parking lot. We did some research. The threshold or the lowest fee for parking at the TD Garden is around $65. The ticket, if you are a visitor parking in a residential spot, is $60. And so what this ordinance seeks to do is amend the North End residential zone up to, or the fine from $60 to $100. And after 21 days, you would pay $33 per day if you have not paid the fine yet. Again, this came directly from the neighborhood. I thank them for coming to both myself and the mayor during the newer meeting. This was also something that I feel like I say his name a lot in this council, and that's how you know that he has an incredible legacy. But Counselor Zachem put this forward in 2015 to have a similar proposal in District 8 around the Fenway, which from my colleague in District 8 has said has been extremely influential and has been effective. I spoke to some business owners as well who understand that this is something that the residents have asked for, and, you know, they will be a part of this conversation. I welcome that. We need to get all stakeholders involved in the discussions and future hearings. But this is a way to increase revenue and also protect some of our residential parking spaces. Some folks have come to me and said, "Let's look wholesale at reforming parking fines in the city." I certainly welcome that conversation too, but I think we need to be intentional about that conversation as well and make sure that we're thinking about the broad implications of increasing parking fines across the city. We're going to focus this conversation just on the North End, and I look forward to those discussions with both residents, my colleagues, and business owners alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata. And this is, I'm looking forward to this filing and to discussions. It's a question, questions that my office gets quite a bit, especially as we deal with fine structures that can seem difficult for a lot of our residents. So thinking about what an updated fine structure could look like, you know, especially we, again, the constituent calls that we get in our office about the fine structure, so thinking about what extensions look like. So I look forward to this conversation. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add counselors Braden Durkin, Finan Anderson, Fitzgerald, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. This docket, docket number 1206, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1207?
Docket number 1207, Counselor Murphy offered the following. Order for a hearing to review the traffic and parking management plan for White Stadium game days.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, we had a very productive hearing on the environmental impacts of White Stadium. And I did promise from that hearing that I would file a specific one because lots of the concerns that came out of that hearing were around the continued questions of the traffic impact and the traffic plan going forward. So I'm filing this hearing order for a public review of the city's finalized traffic and parking management plan for game days at White Stadium. As White Stadium undergoes redevelopment to host the Boston legacy in some large-scale events, nearby residents, schools, and community organizations have raised ongoing concerns about how traffic, parking, and transit will be managed, particularly in densely populated neighborhoods like Roxbury, Dorchester, and Jamaica Plain. There are also neighbors in Fields Corner and Savin Hill area who were also concerned when they knew that the original plan had Fields Corner and JFK UMass stop along the red line as where the buses would pick up people. And so those neighborhoods were also concerned. We've since heard that maybe Fields Corner will not be a place where buses will bus people there, but we still have JFK UMass on the docket. So I want to make sure that those residents in District 3, Council of Fitzgerald's district, are aware also going forward. If that's the only place, where will cars park when they're getting on buses? The city's draft plan includes permit parking restrictions, towing enforcement, shuttle services, and ride-share zones. However, the public comment period closed in May. They did say that they got a lot of comments and feedback, but questions still remain about the feasibility of the assumptions in the plan, its enforcement, and its alignment with local access needs and equity goals. So this hearing seeks to bring transparency to the process, ensure that a realistic, community-informed strategy is finalized before the stadium opens next year in 2026. We must make sure that residents are not left out of the conversation and that our public spaces and public dollars work for all. I look forward to a robust and respectful discussion, like the one we did have last week on the environmental impacts and as we move towards solutions that protect and uplift our neighborhoods. So looking forward to this hearing and to get some answers for our residents.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn and Counselor Fitzgerald. This docket, docket number 1207, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1208?
Docket number 1208, Counselor Flynn offered the following. Resolution denouncing the renaming of U.S. Navy ship Harvey Milk and other U.S. Navy ships named after important civil rights advocates.
The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I add Counselor Fitzgerald as an original co-sponsor?
Counselor Fitzgerald is so added. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm filing this resolution to denounce the decision to rename the U.S. Navy ship Harvey Milk. Last week, the United States Secretary of Defense ordered multiple U.S. Navy ships to be renamed. This includes the United States Navy ship Harvey Milk, named after gay rights activist Harvey Milk. Harvey Milk was the first openly gay candidate to be elected in California. He served as a member of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors in 1977. He brought forward support of LGBTQ+ legislation, including a bill banning discrimination based on sexual orientation in housing, employment, and public accommodation. Prior to being elected, Milk served as a United States naval officer during the Korean War between 1952 and 1954. In 1955, he was forced out to resign, basically, from the U.S. Navy due to being gay. He was discharged with other-than-honorable status, which excluded him from being entitled to any military benefits. That's an issue I've spoken repeatedly here and worked on for about seven years with Commissioner Santiago. That's why it's so critical that a lot of men and women that served in the military were kicked out based on being gay, but they don't have the same benefits because they didn't get an honorable discharge. Myself and Commissioner Santiago worked on that for seven years so that those that were discharged could get the same level of benefits. In 1978, Milk was assassinated by a former elected San Francisco supervisor. In 2021, U.S. Navy ship Harvey Milk was christened, and it represented a significant step toward inclusivity within the U.S. Armed Forces. Now, the remaining of the U.S. NS Harvey Milk comes during Pride Month. And during this period of time, it is shameful to redesignate this ship for political reasons. In addition, the federal administration set a deadline to force active-duty transgender service members to identify themselves and leave the military. Other U.S. Navy ships that are being considered to be renamed, including already-named U.S. Navy ship Thurgood Marshall, United States Navy ship Ruth Bader Ginsburg, both named after Supreme Court justices. The United States naval ship Harriet Tubman, U.S. NS Lucy Stone, Medgar Evers, United States naval ship Caesar Chavez, all civil rights leaders. Politics should have no place in our military. Instead of strengthening our military and honoring our service members, families, veterans, they are fueling division, forcing out those who are willing to serve, cutting the Department of Defense personnel budget. We must denounce these deliberate acts to rename U.S. Navy ships. Yes, it's symbolic, but it means a lot. The legacies of LGBTQ+ pioneer Harvey Milk, Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, Harriet Tubman, Lucy Stone, Medgar Evers, Caesar Chavez must be taught, honored, respected. Let's continue to stand with and fight for LGBTQ+ and civil rights and for our U.S. servicemen, veterans, military families. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this year, I had time to spend, I got to spend some time with the commander of the USS Thomas Hudner. And he, as the commander told me the story, actually, Thomas Hudner is a Fall River guy that fought in the Korean War and intentionally crashed his plane to save his fellow comrade who had been shot down and tried to save him, and he was awarded with a Medal of Honor for that. The only reason I know that story The only reason I know that story about this guy from Fall River and the heroic act he did is because there was a ship named after him, and the commander of that ship would tell that story to all the folks he met of why the ship he commands is named the USS Thomas Hudner. And so because of that, I feel it's such an interesting way to educate people, right? And it might reap, it might reach people, and educating them through this way and telling the stories in a military fashion, it might reach people that might not otherwise educate themselves around these certain people, especially those of certain civil rights advocates. And so I think it was a great idea. I thank you, Counselor Flynn, for allowing me to be a co-sponsor on this. Obviously, it's an important thing, and what a shame it would be to take away that, that mode of education of how to share this story and make sure it goes through history, especially for those that are the civil rights advocates. So thank you, Counselor Flynn. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mihia. You have the floor.
President, and I want to thank my colleagues. I often talk about the fact that when I lived in New York, I worked at the Hedrick Martin Institute, which is an organization that serves LGBTQ-plus students. And then in 2023, it became the home of the Harvey Milk School, a fully accredited public school in New York City, serving LGBTQ-plus students to learn in a safe space. And it was there that I learned about Harvey Milk and all of the work that he had done here, well, across the country. But to going from naming the school, I don't know the impact that it had on the students that attended, to see themselves reflected in someone who held a high position in government. And so I think that it, while it may seem like a symbolic thing in terms of naming, I, I think the impact that it had on the students really shifted their, their perception. So I just want to thank my colleagues for their fierce advocacy, and just wanted to uplift the Hedrick Martin Institute, the home of the Harvey Milk School in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you, the Chair. Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. Councilors Flynn and Fitzgerald seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket number one-two-zero-eight. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed say nay? Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number one-two-zero-eight. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Shen.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Shen, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number one-two-zero-eight has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. I'm trying to interpret the body language. It looks like Counselor Flynn, you want to add? Counselor Santana is a third original co-sponsor?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Counselor Flynn seeks to suspend the rules, add Counselor Santana as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing in here are no objections. Counselor Santana is so added. Okay, thank you. Thank you. This resolution, docket number one-two-zero-eight, has passed and has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number one-two-zero-nine?
Docket number one-two-zero-nine, Counselor Flynn, offer the following. Resolution in support of establishing a Blue Ribbon Commission to study and address downtown office vacancies and city revenue.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm filing this resolution, again, this year, to call for the establishment of a Blue Ribbon Commission made up of business leaders, city and state officials, neighborhood advocates, other relevant experts, to study and make recommendations regarding the issue of office vacancies in downtown Boston. This body passed this resolution on this critical issue last year. I hope my colleagues will join me once again. Vacancy rates impact the value of real estate, which in turn impacts the amount of property taxes the city collects. The latest joint study from the Boston Policy Institute and Tufts University finds that there is now a potential increased shortfall of 1.7 billion to 2.1 billion in city revenue over the next five years. This year, according to a report by the real estate firm Cushman &amp; Wakefield, the office vacancy rate in Boston is at seventeen percent, up from fifteen percent last year. Both during and now, following the pandemic, we have seen offices and storefronts become vacant due to remote and work-from-home policies and lack of foot traffic. In 2023, I held a hearing on bringing back all city or Boston board meetings and related business in person with a hybrid option for the public, in an effort to bring back much-needed foot traffic and economic activity in downtown Boston and improve community engagement. I continue to encourage more in-person work from city employees, for the public sector to lead by example, and help restore the value of our downtown Boston offices in real estate. Downtown Boston is an important economic driver for our city, state, and throughout the New England economy. But over the last year, a number of high-profile buildings have sold for large discounts, including 101 Arch Street, selling for forty-three million less than when it was bought in twenty, in 2005. One Lincoln Street, formerly known as the State Street Building, and now Harbor Vest, which was sold for four-hundred million at a foreclosure auction this year. And 99 High Street, which sold for 227 million in April, for 46 million dollar less than in 2005. In the final analysis, with falling commercial property values, over seventy percent dependence on property taxes, and more than fifty percent of land absorbed by our large nonprofits, we have a long-term fiscal issue to address in Boston. It is simply unsustainable for all sectors of our economy to continue to work from home and contribute to declining revenue. It may not be popular, but the truth is that there is no such thing as a free lunch. For the good of the city of Boston, the public sector, business leaders, and nonprofit partners need to prioritize in-person work. With global economic issues, high interest rates, and a slowdown in development in the city, now is not the time for significant tax increases on businesses or residents. We need to exercise fiscal responsibility, discipline. Boston works best when we work together. I hope my colleagues will join me once again on this critical issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Has any, was anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please, there is no speaking from anyone in the audience, please. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please add Councilors Braden, Murphy, and Weber? Counselor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number one-two-zero-nine. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number one-two? Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on docket number one-two-zero-nine?
Roll call vote on docket number one-two-zero-nine. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Present.
Counselor Durkin, present. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
No.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, no. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Shen.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Shen, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number one-two-zero-nine has received eleven votes in the affirmative, one present and one negative.
Thank you. Docket number one-two-zero-nine has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number one-two-one-zero?
Docket number one-two-one-zero, Counselors Louie Shen and Durkin, offer the following. Resolution in support of home care workers bargaining for a fair contract.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council President Louie Shen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd first like to request a suspension of the rules, add Counsel Santana as a third original co-sponsor.
Seeking, seeing in here are no objections. Counselor Santana is so added.
Thank you. Home care workers provide critical services that enable thousands of Boston residents, especially seniors and people with disabilities, to remain safely in their homes and communities. But they are underpaid, even though, despite their dedication. Despite delivering compassionate professional care under often difficult conditions, home care workers rank among the lowest paid in the healthcare industry. They have high turnover concerns. Low wages and poor working conditions drive high turnover disruption, disrupting continuity of care for patients and placing additional strain on the broader healthcare system. Home care workers organized through SEIU 1199 Massachusetts are bargaining for a fair contract that includes livable wages, improved benefits, workplace protections commensurate with the dignity of their work. One such group are the Alara Home Care Workers, bargaining for a wage increase among many other things. And they acknowledge the difficult financial situation, but to be, to, to request a $2 increase and to be countered with a $0.05 increase does not respect the dignity of the work that they do. I think it is ending right now, or ended earlier. There was a rally today from 11:00 to 1:00 that 1199 home care workers did in support of their fight for a fair wage, and I just want to uplift them. Also, in the moment that we're in, when we're talking about immigrants and everything, so many of our home healthcare workers are immigrants who are here, have been here, maybe not that long, have been here, who knows, but are critical to our healthcare industry and to our health, home healthcare workers. I want to shout out everyone who's uplifted that, families of loved ones who have home healthcare workers, who talked about how the system would collapse if we didn't have our immigrant workers supporting those in need of that assistance. There's an equity focus here. The workforce is overwhelmingly composed of women, people of color, and immigrants, groups that deserve recognition, respect, and a meaningful voice in setting their employment conditions. And there are citywide benefits supporting, of course, this union. And these efforts, fair compensation, and strong support for home care workers translates into more stable, high-quality care benefiting all Bostonians and reducing systemic healthcare costs. Also, we ask people to live in this city, and it's very expensive, and it's important that we support our workers when they are fighting for a wage increase. So I hope that all of my colleagues will join me in supporting this resolution. Our 1199 healthcare homeworkers would be really appreciative of the support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. I'm honored to co-sponsor this alongside Council President Louie Shen. It was only a few months ago that we stood here to support collective bargaining for MGB primary care physicians, and I'm honored to do so again for home care workers organized through SEIU 1199. This work is so personal, personal for me. My, I remember the last few years of my grandfather's life, and who took care of him, and the dignity that they gave him, and the people that lived with him. And I think a lot of us who have had aging parents and grandparents have been bankrupted by how much this cost, and yet, when the people who are actually doing this work are standing up and asking for a fair wage, they don't get one. Meanwhile, families that are dealing with the bills of these companies cannot afford them and are going into debt to, to make sure that their family member gets the dignity they deserve. You know, it's, these are folks changing diapers, like, these are folks doing the work that, changing IVs, doing really, really difficult, and it's dirty work. It's, it's not easy work. And I just got to see it with my grandfather, and the dignity that those home healthcare workers and then folks who worked with him once he was in, in care, it, like, these few folks deserve more than $2 an hour, and $0.05 is a pittance compared to what these folks deserve. And I asked the city council to stand with us today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I first wanted to stand Counsel President Ruth Louie Shen and Counselor Durkin for including me in this resolution. I just wanted to go on the record of supporting our home care workers, who are right now organizing for a fair union contract, including higher wages and better working conditions, right? I think both the President and both Counselor Durkin touched on this, the working conditions that these home care workers go through. They're taking care of some of our most vulnerable residents here in the city of Boston. As many of you know, with my story with my mom of being able to battle cancer, we've had to invest in, in having someone help her around. So, you know, you just really want to make sure that we're standing with our workers here. They don't get paid very much, but they do so much for our city and keep our city moving forward. So I just want to stand with my colleagues and with our home care workers to make sure that they get a fair contract that they deserve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Again, I just want to echo support for this resolution. I just want to say thank you for all the home care workers that are out there. They are such a critical part to our healthcare system, and as Counselor Durkin has pointed out, a service that a lot of our seniors do rely on. Big shout out to SEIU 1199 for organizing and advocating, and I'm looking forward to support this resolution. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Peppin, Counselor Weber? Please add the chair. Counselor Louie Shen, Counselor President Louie Shen, Counselor Durkin, and Santana, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1210. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. Thank you. Docket number one-two-one-zero has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number one-two-one-one?
Docket number one-two-one-one, Counselors Peppin and Worrell, offer the following. Resolution recognizing June as Men's Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As you all know, I say here, June is Men's Mental Health Month, and it's a very important topic to me. I've been speaking about this openly in the council since joining, of ensuring that men aren't scared to speak up about their emotions. And as I speak about this, I just wanted to share a quick fact with you all from the CDC, which shares that suicide rate among males is approximately four times higher than the rate among women. Although the rate for, for, for women of depression is higher, men don't speak up. We are more, we don't share our emotions. And I just want to make sure that we feel comfortable about that, that we create spaces for, for men to speak about just what they're going through, making sure that we normalize this and stop, do not stigmatize the notion that men are supposed to always be strong, that it's not okay to show emotions, that it's not okay to cry, because it is okay. And I always think about the places that I personally feel great in, and it's, one place is always, it's the barber shop. You know, where we, where we come along as men, and we just talk about our day-to-day stuff. We, we can sit back, get a nice haircut, and some of us even stay a little longer, just chat about sports or chat about where, what our lives, where our lives look like. So I just wanted to, I just always encourage opening up space for that type of community space. But I also wanted to acknowledge an institution in Hyde Park that has caught my attention recently, that is doing a great job, and that is a young man with a plan. It's right in Cleary Square. It's a, it's an organization started by a BPS teacher, and he was able to get a space in Hyde Park, right in the height of Cleary Square, across the municipal building, where he allows teenagers from middle schools and high schools to come in for mentoring, but it also provides a place for them to make their own meals, to play video games, to get mentored, to have different resources from the city come speak to the young men about what they're going through, how can they better enhance their lives in the future. And last week, I was there, and I was able to sit down. I was playing some 2K25 with them. I lost terribly. But what I've noticed is that even in the midst of playing video games with the teenagers, we were able to talk about some similarities of what we're going through, and realized that during these tough times, it's very hard to, to find an outlet, to speak. And I just wanted to give a huge shout out to a young man with a plan for creating that space for young men in Hyde Park that oftentimes don't know where else to go. So I just wanted to say that, and I just wanted to, to give a reminder to everyone out there that are struggling with mental health, to, it's okay to speak up, it's okay to look for help. You aren't alone. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Peppin. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for, thank you to Counselor Peppin for introducing
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for, thank you to Counsel Peppin for introducing this and adding me as a co-sponsor. We don't talk about mental health numbers a lot, especially when it comes to men, but the numbers speak loud and clear. Nearly one in 10 men experience depression or anxiety, and yet, less than half ever get help. And when it comes to black men, that number drops even further, not because we don't feel pain, but because of the stigma attached around seeking help. We're told not to complain, that we should push through, that silence is strength, but I want to say this clearly to all my men out there, brothers and specifically black men, is please, please complain and also please speak up. You don't have to wait until it becomes an emergency. The ER should not be our first therapist, and sometimes we think we're depressed, but we're just emotionally exhausted. That exhaustion is the weight of survival, and healing starts when we start mistaking survival for strength. My office has worked to create spaces where black men can heal and express themselves freely. I was, I'm honored to serve on the Black Men and Boys Commission, where we are looking to address men's mental health. My office is also advocated for more dedicated support for men's mental health within the Boston Public Health Commission, also more funding to Boston Public Schools during the budget process, and also the Men's Mental Health Initiative programs. I was also part of the inaugural board for Kings Amongst King, which is an affinity group, which creates that barbershop feeling that Counsel Peppin was speaking of. Brotherhood that's rooted in not only healing, but reflection, and also just rewriting what mental health looks like. I also believe that public safety is about making sure that every boy has a gym, a safe place to cry, and a caring adult to talk to. And for anyone that's listening today and feel like they need someone to speak to, there is a hotline, behavioral helpline, and the number is 833-773-2445. Again, that number is 833-773-2445. And to all my men out there, again, let this resolution be a reminder, your mental health does matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counsel Orrell. If I am reading the body language correctly, Counsel Peppin, you would like to request to add Counsel Santana as a third original co-sponsor?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Peppin seeks to suspend the rules and add Counsel Santana as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Santana is so added. Counsel Santana, would you like to speak on this document? Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank my, my colleagues, Counsel Peppin and Counsel Worrell for, for including me in this. And, you know, a lot of shout outs have gone out, and I know we're talking about men, but there is one amazing woman here in Roxbury who, of the name of Toy Burton, who does so much work in this space. I know that Counsel Worrell and I just, I think, just believe last week, attended her, her annual summit that's focused on men's, on mental health. And we got to meet so many great individuals from our communities, and, you know, just don't want to repeat the, the things that have been said, but thinking just even in my own journey, you know, growing up here in the city of Boston, I know that I relied on mentors who met with me weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, and in some cases, who took, you know, me out to learn, to play basketball, to play baseball, and just to be able to, be able to talk to them and have a safe place where we can talk. I, I know that, that's something that's very personal to me. I continue to do that today. I, I try to, I have six mentees that I try to see bi-weekly. I'm not always successful with that, but really just want to be able to give them a shout out. I won't name them by name, but they know who they are. And it's actually part of my mental health journey too, to be able to be with youth and be able to talk about the things that are going on here, educating them, but just them hearing me out too. So as much as I know it's, it's, it's a service for them, I, I receive so much from being with them. And, you know, just want to be able to invest in our young men here in the city of Boston, particularly our black and brown men, Latino men, who go through so much here in the city of Boston. We want to make sure that they have someone, loving adults, who are going to take care for them. So again, thank you, Counsel Peppin, for bringing us here today. I know this is something that you talk a lot about. I also just want to quickly shout out Counsel Durkin, who's, I know that goes part of your main speech, just mental health in general, I mean, for your work in this area. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the men stepping up for other men. That's what I like to see, so just wanted to rise and thank you all. I've talked about this in the chamber. My grandfather died by suicide and my cousin did too, and he was struggling with his mental health. He was also a military vet, and post-traumatic stress disorder is real, and just being a black man or a Latino man or a man of color, period, just a man in general, you have a lot to carry. And oftentimes, there is this notion that you're just going to keep on keeping on. So we see you and we affirm you and we appreciate you. I'll just say a few things. Our office last year hosted an event for some of the baseball players, some of the softball players who just had to be biased, the man that was murdered by a young, I don't know if they were young or what, but it was the motorcycle, the moped incident that happened last summer, and a lot of the men were struggling with their own mental health. They didn't know how to process, and there's a lot of machismo in particularly in, in the Latino community and the men were. I went to visit and I saw them incredibly broken, and it was a beautiful thing to see how they were supporting each other even through their tears. And we created an environment and had a therapist come in and do a session around what it looks like to heal and to heal publicly, because we have to create space for that. And so to that, our office on June 30th, we're going to be hosting a men's event. We'll have more details soon, but it'll be June 30th, and we're going to be doing it in celebration and in support of Mental Health Awareness Month for, for men. And I want to give a shout out to, I'm not going to start giving shout outs to y'all because then everybody's going to get mad at me, but shout out to everybody who's doing this work. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and want to thank the sponsors for bringing this important message forward and having a discussion. I also want to highlight for men, the incredible opportunity and services that veterans have at the Veterans Administration, especially on mental health counseling. Whether it's at Jamaica Plain, West Roxbury, we had one here on Causeway Street that was downsized. But for men struggling, in that they are veterans, I do want to, I do want to say that the VA does tremendous work in supporting returning veterans, young veterans, but older veterans as well. There's, there's a lot of great groups that are available to men and women, obviously, but it's a great way to talk to people about experiences that they've had, whether it's engaged in combat or, or any other type of issue. Many veterans do have post-traumatic stress disorder. Now, now it's actually called post-traumatic stress, they, they don't necessarily use the disorder anymore to take the stigma away from it. But I do want to highlight that if any veteran across the city is in need of VA services and they're not already signed up for veterans services, these are services that you've earned. No one's giving those services or programs to you. You've earned them through your service. If you're not enrolled in the VA medical system, please let me know and I will help you get enrolled for the disabled American veterans. But they do have exceptional programs at the VA for men and for everybody, especially with mental health counseling availability. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Peppin, Santana Worrell, for bringing this forward. The only way we're ever going to break down the stigma and normalize reaching out for help and getting mental health services if we talk about it and we share our own experiences, so thank you for that. It's something I've done for decades in the recovery world, which, you know, many people are dual diagnosed, so mental health and recovery go hand in hand. And as a mother of three boys, three sons, and a teacher to so many boys, we often do, and it's been said here earlier, that, you know, the boys just have to toughen up, or if they get quiet, we just think they're okay. So it is important that we reach out and let them know, and I think it's great to see you standing up and letting your constituents know that you can reach out, you know, to you personally, and sharing all of the wonderful resources across the city, because we don't want anyone to feel as though there isn't help out there for them. So thank you for bringing this to the Council floor.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Who filed this, Peppin? Thank you to my brothers in service who filed this. Super important topic, right? And I felt, I, I would be remiss if I didn't stand and say something. I am a mom, a wife, a sister, a daughter of men, so I feel that, you know, I have to stand on record and make a statement. But the work of supporting our men in society, and do you guys remember the last time this was on the floor, when Frank Baker was like, "White men matter too"? That was, it's true, right? Like, it's not just black men, but there is a level of, you know, this, this is, there's a bit of a difference when you're talking about specifically in the black culture, how black men are expected to just suppress their feelings or show up. And so I have taken this very personal in my, in my life, in my role as a mother, as a foster mom, previous foster mom to about 15 boys, the rest were girls. I specifically chose to foster and mentor boys in particularly, and I worked about 11 years in the mental health sector, working specifically with teenage boys. And I did that because I believe that the, one of the hardest jobs to do in America is to parent a black boy, is to love a black boy. And it comes deeply with this, you know, mental health is at the crux of all of these issues. They're expected to, they're sexualized, they're commoditized, and then they're imprisoned and over-criminalized. And then they're expected to hide their feelings and dehumanized. So I, I have to say that my job as a mom has been to invest in educating my children, but to ingrain the confidence and the ability to be able to express themselves, to deescalate crisis, to deal with interventions, to be able to deal with hardships, but to be able to also understand that it is okay for them to communicate and be patient with themselves, but be kind with their own evolutionary process. I'm proud to say that so far, I think I've done okay, and as my son says, you know, you are the best mom a mom can mom that a son can talk to. It's corny, but it means everything to me. So I support you, my brothers here in service, and thank you for filing.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Just want to thank the filers. It's, it's through you speaking out vocally about the importance of mental health and the vulnerability and of seeking therapy and of having those safe spaces that we actually begin to chip away at the problem. And so thank you for being those voices here in our community, and I want to uplift a lot of what my colleagues stated. Mental health is as important as your physical health, and making sure that we are taking care of peoples, encouraging people to take care of the, the mental health even, especially in these challenging times, it's important that we do that. And I want to uplift a project that Vanya Arroyo has been working on, the Barbershop Clinics, where actually in barber shops, they are led by a therapist, they are having these really deep discussions, particularly in black and brown communities, and that's incredibly important work. So thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernando Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Weber, and please add the chair? Counselors Peppin, Worrell and Santana, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Document Number 1211. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this document has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Document Number 1212?
Document Number 1212, Counselors Murphy and Flynn offer the following: Resolution in support of extended hybrid work accommodations for Rose Marie Pacia during cancer treatment.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Fitzgerald.
Counsel Murphy sees suspend the rules, add Counsel Fitzgerald as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Fitzgerald is so added. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Rose Marie Pacia has served with distinction in the Inspection Service Department since transitioning to a hybrid work model at the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. During that period, she was diagnosed with blood cancer that metastasized to her bones, and later she underwent shoulder surgery to address cancer-related bone deterioration. After exhausting her paid leave, Rose Marie took a one-year unpaid medical leave because she didn't realize she had other options. She did speak to her union rep who told her that she did have other options after she was out unpaid, not knowing she could be back in a hybrid model. And upon return, she adopted a physician-supported hybrid work schedule. Is everything okay? In person, her work schedule is in person Monday, Wednesday and Friday mornings, with remote work on the afternoons of those days, and full remote work on Tuesday, Thursday. This hybrid model accommodation accommodates her ongoing treatments, including inpatient infusions and post-surgical recovery, which produce side effects such as fatigue, nausea, urgent physical needs, frequent bathroom use, and we can just imagine a lot of other physical needs that are better managed at home. Rose Marie has performed all job duties fully and effectively under this work plan without disruption to the department's operations, and the ISD Human Resources is now requiring her to return to a full-time in-person schedule on Mondays and Fridays, and half-days in person on Wednesdays, a schedule she cannot maintain despite no evidence of performance issues and without consideration of her medical accommodations. So I don't need to continue to read the whole resolution. I know my colleagues will share some other personal reasons, but I do believe that we should, like we do when we vote on nine, non-binding resolutions, show our support and behind Rose Marie, who was going through a difficult time. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to Counsel Murphy for letting me be a co-sponsor on this as well. As leaders of this city, I believe it is important to show compassion and understand the needs of our workers who are battling advanced cancer. Rose Marie is a dedicated worker at Inspection Services. As Counsel Murphy mentioned, she has used up her paid leave while fighting advanced blood cancer that is now in her bones. She took a full year of unpaid medical leave, and now is working a hybrid schedule. She's a hard-working, dedicated, she performs her job well, she follows through. Rose Marie is now being asked to get back to work at the Inspection Service Department despite having ongoing treatments and infusions and other types of health side effects she has to manage. Rose Marie has maintained a good work performance with her accommodations. There is no reason why she cannot continue treatment while working her schedule. I ask that reasonable accommodations be provided for Rose Marie so that she can continue with her job while receiving treatment for cancer. You have to be both physically and mentally tough to fight advanced cancer. That's what Rose Marie is doing. Workers should not have to make a decision about their health or their job. Rose Marie should be allowed to continue to work with accommodations and pursue treatment without the threat, without the threat of adverse employment decisions. I asked my colleagues to join me today in support of Rose Marie, to respectfully ask Inspection Services to show compassion and to let her get back to work. This is about dignity for a city employee. Don't let anyone tell us we're not allowed to stand up and fight on behalf of people without a voice in city government. That's exactly the job of the City Council. We stand up for people when they don't have any voice at all. That's our job. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the, Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counsel Murphy, for adding me as a co-sponsor. Well, Rose Marie is a resident of District 3, and I have spoke with her on the phone as well as with her union and folks at ISD. At the end of the day, Rose Marie just needs time. She's recovering, she just had arm surgery. Part of it, the union she belongs to is getting a qualification that is actually not even relevant to the job she does at the moment, but she cannot even open the textbook with her hand. Hybrid, the hybrid accommodations are made for exact instances such as this. It's not made for the healthy, able-bodied person to be able to be home and put their feet up and work from home. It's for instances such as this, where someone's battling cancer, cannot have the energy to make it through the day, but still produces some of the best work out of that department of anybody. And so I, I do believe, I know that meddling in HR issues is not something the council should be involved with all the time. should be involved with all the time. However, in this case, I still think as a resident District 3, and you all may find out one day when a resident in your district comes up and has an issue like this, that you do want to speak for them, right? These are exactly, as Council Flynn put, these are the people you do want to speak up for and make sure that you are their voice for them. And so while we cannot force this to happen, I hope that those in HR and at ISD here are pleased to please initiate the, the hybrid accommodations back for Rose Marie. And just give her time, and she will get back to a full workforce when and if she is able to, when her body allows her. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I haven't had the privilege of meeting Rose Marie. I wish her a speedy recovery. Generally, I'm a proponent of the hybrid model, especially if it is classified as a reasonable accommodation. I don't know if it is in this case. I quite frankly don't have any of the details of this case. I've stood up on similar resolutions where I've cautioned colleagues on the topic of getting involved in very complex HR or personnel matters with a simple yes or no vote. There is a process in place within HR with multiple layers. There's investigations. I know that there may be some. I actually don't even know if there's a union involved in this. And so because of those reasons, I'll be voting present on this, but I do wish Rose Marie, again, a very speedy recovery and with great respect and admiration from my colleagues who are advocating on behalf of their constituent. I just will be voting present on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta Zapata. And not to repeat, but that's a, I just want to say that I concur in, on this issue where it's specific about an employee. I, it is, I think it's the best interest of what's the direct business of this council that I also wish her well and think that individual matters, this body should be, not be delving into while being able to advocate more broadly for policies that support those who need it. The chair recognizes Council Fernand Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's interesting that, you know, sometimes people will like vote present to sort of absolve themselves of the responsibility of actually showing transparency on this floor. And when I've, when I've voted president, I think for me, I can speak for myself, it's because I don't know enough about something and I have to actually go research and figure it out before I can take a position. But also, I've seen both sides. I've seen people here say that we can get involved, and then I've seen people do it other ways. So, for example, write letters and then have colleagues, and for the sake of like Freedom Information Act, have colleagues sign and then put it on record, put it in communications so that it's transparent. I've seen that, too. So I don't know if the resolution, and I'm not going to say that a resolution is not the right way or the wrong way. Technically, legally, it's not. However, we have voted on resolutions where we're just making a statement. We're just saying, "This is how we feel, we support a thing," although we know it's not legally binding. So I will be voting yes because that's, you know, it's the decent thing to just say, "Yeah, on record, I support this." Also, I know that legally, it's not binding, they don't have to do anything about it, but it's just a statement. But you could have done that with communications, and you could have done that with a letter. And so hopefully, moving forward, you will be, do it properly. But today, I support it, I will say yes. But yeah, legally, it's, it's wrong, it's off. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I, I, I have never voted present on, on anything, and I've told people I would not, I have not. Council Fernand Anderson, but, but I will be voting present on this in part because I'm not sure we should be, I'm sorry. Yeah. No, no, it's, it's fine. We were just, we were just joking. I believe that, you know, here, you know, I, I don't, I think I've spoken on the floor before where there's a whole, you know, there's a grievance process and there are, you know, matters to be worked out. I, I don't think it's appropriate on employment matters for us to weigh in like this. I do want to thank Council Fitzgerald for, for speaking to the union and doing that kind of outreach. I still don't know enough about this to, to, to vote on it. I'm not going to oppose it, but I don't know enough to support it, so I will be voting present. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Murphy, well, before I go to Council Murphy, Council Mejia, and then I'll go back to you, Council Murphy. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I always like to see things as learning opportunities, right? So we've been functioning within this iteration of the body for almost a year and a half, and I think Council Anderson makes a great point in terms of sometimes we do this, sometimes we do that. I think we are, within the last six months that we have left with this iteration before we move through, I think that we can all benefit from having a very clear understanding of what this resolution looks like. I just feel like, because then that way, we have a standard. And right now, it just feels like every single time we come here, and I'm like, "Okay, we're going to go this way." I just, let's just like figure it out, come up with a memo, talk to the colleagues, or do a little working session, whatever we need to do, come up with some terms and agreements of like, what are the types of resolutions that are going to be acceptable on the floor, what constitutes this, that, or the other. So then that way, when we find ourselves in these situations, there is a standard. But right now, we have yet to have that, it feels like, because it feels sometimes different strokes for different folks and different things for different things. And I would appreciate some standard that we can all agree upon and be held accountable to as we move forward, because it just gets a little bit messy when we don't have something that we can point to. So I think moving forward, next six months, let's just figure it out and not keep doing this.
Thank you, Council Mejia. I have cautioned against this approach for individual employee matters. You have a hearing order that talked about them generally, about hiring and firing practices. I think those general conversations are important. I have not wanted to stifle the voice of my colleagues in their filings, which is why I have not looked and stated Rule 5 prevents the blocking because it doesn't have a direct bearing on the business of the council, these individual disputes. However, I do take your point to, to heart about having some clarity based on conversations with our council here on this, with Megan and our central staff director, and in talking to corporation council. I do not want to silence the voice of anyone on this council, but I also want to make sure that we are using our time here properly. There are different avenues of advocacy for individuals who are in need of support, many of the claims of which have been meritorious. Myself having drafted a letter in support of someone who is experiencing an employee issue, but is it within the confines of the I and L chamber? Is that how we should be spending our time here on individual employee matters that are not within our purview? I don't believe so. The chair recognizes Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Per Rule 5, I don't think this is properly before the body, and because I think if we look at 17G of the city charter, we, I don't think this is properly before the body, so I will be objecting to a vote today.
Okay. Councilor Durkin is objecting to a vote, and this matter will be sent to the committee on.
I was next, and then you might have the order, so I would like to see.
Councilor Murphy, there has been an objection, and I am sending this docket to the committee on labor, on labor workforce and economic development. This, it's, it's in committee. Thank you. Mr. Clark, could you?
Tell me then why you went to other colleagues before me, whether you are.
Because, Council Murphy, so you have raised a point of order about speaking. I disagree with your point of order. I have ruled against your point of order. I understand that you were speaking. If someone has an objection and the objection has been made, the docket has been, will be sent to committee. And so that docket is sent to committee. Mr. Clark, could you please, we are now on to green sheets. Before we move to green sheets, would anyone like to add their name to a vote or to, would like to motion to reconsider a vote or add their name to a docket that, when they were out of chambers? The chair recognizes Council Fernand Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think motion to reconsider. Can I get a second?
On what docket?
The, oh, the blue ribbon. 1209.
Okay. So there's a motion to reconsider on the floor that's seconded? Okay. All in favor of supporting the motion to reconsider, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. I saw it, your vote was in the.
My vote was no.
Anybody would like to change your vote to a?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clark, could you please correct the record?
I did some research. Sorry, Council Flynn.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name or motion to reconsider a vote? The chair recognizes Council Murphy.
My light was on from earlier.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name to a docket when they were out of chambers or a motion to reconsider on a vote? Okay. We are now on to, let me make sure I have my script. We are now moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there, and this has changed. Oh, well, okay. Does anyone have any pulls from the green sheets? Not that I'm aware of. Okay. We are now moving on to late files. I've been informed by the clerk that there are 17 late file matters. 10 are personnel orders. And how many are? Five from the mayor. Okay. Okay. Thank you. We will now take a vote to add the 10 personnel late file matters onto the record. All in favor of adding these 10 late file matters onto the record, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. These late file personnel matters have been added to the record. Mr. Clark, could you please read them into the record?
10 late file personnel, 10 late file personnel orders. Council Loujen for Council Coletta. Council Loujen for Council Coletta. Council Loujen for Council Coletta. Council Loujen for Council Worrall. 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 Council Loujen for Council Murphy. Council Loujen for Central Staff. Council Loujen for, for City Council Staff. That's it.
Thank you. We will now take a vote to add these late file personnel matters to, we will now take a vote on these late file personnel matters. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. These late file personnel matters have passed. We are now on to the five late file matters from the mayor. Mr. Clark, does everyone have a copy of those late files on their desk? Yes. Okay. Mr. Clark, could you please read those late file matters into the record? Oh, yeah, it's the union one and then the four separate. Okay. Read the union one first into the record. Okay. You can read those two matters.
First two late files from the office of the mayor. Dear Council, I transmit herewith a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Public Schools Department for fiscal year '25 in the amount of $394,901 to cover cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the school committee and the city of Boston and the administrative guild, CEIU Local 888. The terms of the contracts are September 1st, 2024 through August 31st, 2027. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2% and flat amounts of $250, $900, and $850 to be given in September of each fiscal year of the contract. The contract also supports increased opportunities for professional development and mentoring.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add this late file matter onto the record. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. I saw that this matter has been added onto the record. Mr. Clark, could you please read the second late file matter on this issue into the record?
From the office of, may I transmit herewith for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year '25 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $394,901 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year '25 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the school committee of the city of Boston and the administrative guild, SEIU Local 888.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Worrall. Council Worrall, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I hope you.
Oh, I apologize. All in favor of adding late file matter onto the record, say aye. All, absent objection, this matter is added onto the record. Council Worrall, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I'll be looking to suspend and pass this late file. These are union contracts for 276 workers in this guild. Had the opportunity to speak to the union around this contract, and these workers earn some of the lower salaries in the city, starting at about $48,000 and ranging up to $55,000 in terms of base salary. This contract addresses salary increases retroactively for FY '25, our $250 plus 2% in September through 2024. Starting in September, it'll be $900 plus 2% for year two, and in FY '27, it'll be $850 plus 2%. So it follows that pattern that the city has created for our lowest-wage workers to increase their pay by a base amount and then that up by 2% on top. Operational reforms include increased opportunities for internal and external professional development, a mentorship program, parent tenure, guild school secretaries with new school secretaries, and revised language to expand the window for posting and hiring for guild vacancies over the summer. This also expanding the pool of potential candidates for guild positions ranked grade 23 and below. The also updated leave and holiday benefits to make the guild benefits consistent with those of other BPS and city of Boston unions. These workers are the administrative assistants in our schools, they're the public-facing folks for our parents' guardians, so if a parent is going to a school and they're interacting with someone, it's most, more than likely a guild member. And the reason why we're looking to suspend and pass is that these are some of the lowest-wage workers in the city of Boston. We just want to make sure that these funds, these salaries, these bonuses get to them as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Worrall. Is anyone looking to speak on this matter? Council Worrall seeks to suspend the rules, and, oh, the chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Just wanted to rise and thank Council Worrall for bringing this forward, knowing that I've been, many of the members have reached out asking when we'll be passing it. So happy that we can get this moved forward and another union that will have their contract in place. So thank you, Council Worrall.
Thank you. And I want to second that, Council Worrall. I know that this is very important for the union and for our workers, and I, and I know that this is not always the, the method that you like to do on these, but it's really important for these workers. The chair recognizes, Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank Council Worrall. Traditionally, we do have a hearing, but I do understand that we want to make sure that these union workers get their pay as soon as they can. They do a tremendous job. They're low-paid workers, and that's the job of the city council, is again, it's advocating for people for decent wages, healthcare, safe working conditions. That's what, that's what we're all about, with a, with a voice of people in the city that are struggling, including city workers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counselor Worrall seeks passage of this docket. All those in favor, say aye. Mr. Clark, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on the order, late file order by the mayor appropriating $394,901. Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata. Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin. Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernand Anderson. Council Fitzgerald. Council Flynn. Council Loujen. Council Mejia. Council Murphy. Council Pepe. Council Santana. Council Weber. And Council Worrall. Council Worrall, yes. Docket, there's no docket, it's a late file, but it has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And on the second docket?
On the second docket. Late file docket from the mayor. This order is reducing the fiscal year '25 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $394,901.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Could we please conduct a roll call vote on that docket?
Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata. Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin. Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernand Anderson. Council Fitzgerald. Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn. Council Loujen.
Yes.
Council Loujen, yes. Council Mejia. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, yes. This docket has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket has passed. Okay, we are now on to the remaining three late filed matters from the mayor. Mr. Clerk, could you please read them into the record?
Third late filed matter, I hereby transmit for your approval in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a monetary donation valued at $1,000 donated by GWK Investments. The purpose of this donation is to support Spark Pride Event, which will occur June 18th, Fourth late filed matter by the mayor, I hereby transmit for your approval in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an in-kind donation valued at $4,000 representing the cost of a Google meat box donated by Lenovo. And the fifth late filed matter from the mayor, I hereby transmit for your approval in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an in-kind donation of food valued at $2,325 donated by Northeastern University. The purpose of this donation is to support the Spark Council Chats, which will occur May through August 2025.
Thank you. Absent objection to these late filed matters. They are added onto the record. And now I am going to seek suspension and passage of these low-dollar in-kind contributions that help with the operations of our city and helping our residents. All in favor of passing these matters, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. These dockets have passed. We are now on to the next late file matter. Mr. Clerk, could you please read it into the record? The resident is fine. It doesn't matter.
Offered by Counsel Brian Worrell, resolution recognizing Juneteenth in the City of Boston.
Thank you. Absent objection, this resolution is added to our docket, and the chair recognizes Counsel Worrell.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counsel President Louie Jean as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you. I'm so added. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
And I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Mejia as a third original co-sponsor.
Counsel Worrell, so to suspend the rules, add Counsel Mejia as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Mejia is so added. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
And thank you, Madam President, for your presentation this morning. Thank you to the poet, and also, it's always great to always uplift the Museum of African-American History. We all know that the museum was simply the latest target in our federal government's attack on our city's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, but that will not stop us. As a council, we have increased funding to the Office of Blackmail Advancement two years in a row. One of those increases is paying off with the Equity Study on Blackmales in Boston now ongoing. We've moved forward with the Task Force on Reparations. In addition, we've made progress on equity in city contracts and more equitable funding on the capital budget for black and brown neighborhoods, which saw decades of disinvestment. We know from our past that equality might be delayed, but it would not be denied. Slavery existed in Boston for about one-third of our city's history. It was a fundamental piece of the foundation that Boston was built on, but in the end, we prevailed. Yet the chains of so many black ancestors still weigh on us and on our systems. The profits of slave trade paved the way for many of the buildings and neighborhoods that were built in Boston. In the 20th century, our federal government directed decades of segregation in education and housing in our city, that we are still reckoning with and unraveling the effects of. But I ask that this year amid all of these relenting, unrelenting attacks from our own federal government, that we see hope and optimism of that day 160 years ago. It was freedom delayed but not denied. We shall overcome this moment, these feelings, and this struggle. Thank you, and I'm seeking to suspend and pass this resolution for Juneteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell, and again, happy Juneteenth. There will be a lot of events here marking Juneteenth. It is important to remember that Juneteenth is about jubilee and about joy for the liberation of African-American folks here in the city. And I again want to uplift and thank Amanda Shay and Dr. Noel Trent for joining us this morning as we march Juneteenth here on the council. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counsel Worrell for adding me as an original co-sponsor. I always get up and say this, but I'm really grateful to then Counsel President Janey and my colleague Counsel Campbell. We three had the audacity here on the Boston City Council. Counsel Braden and Counsel Flynn were still, were here at that time when we passed that here on the council. And I remember having to push to make sure that it was a paid holiday in the City of Boston and the mayor. Then Mayor Walsh made note that we would have to first make it a state holiday. Needless to say that here we are celebrating Juneteenth, and folks are able to take the day off, and I just want to thank my previous sisters in service, then Counsel President Janey and Counsel Campbell for allowing me to be one of their third co-sponsors on that particular piece of legislation. So happy Juneteenth, and I look forward to celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn? Just because I, are you adding your name to the, for this? You'd like to speak on this? Okay, while we, okay. Counsel Flynn, Counsel, is your, Counsel Murphy, I need to see hands up. Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber. Counselors Worrell, myself, and Mejia seek suspension of the rules and passage of this docket. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Counsel Flynn, if you'd like to speak on this matter, you may.
Yeah, thank you, and I'd like my name to be added as well. I also want to say thank you to Counsel Mejia, Counsel, now mayor Janey, and Attorney General Campbell for their work on bringing this forward. It was their leadership, it was your leadership that brought us forward and helped, helped heal the city. It was because of your leadership and Mayor Janey and the Attorney General, now Attorney General. Madam Chair, I would like to also acknowledge African-American veterans during this period of time. I've spent a lot of time in, over the last eight years, working with African-American veterans at the VA, but I do know that they served our country with honor, with integrity, with distinction, and they don't get the same level of services, respect, that other veterans have. And that's why I've made it a commitment to do everything I possibly can as a city counselor to support all veterans, but to especially support African-American veterans. They, they were wounded, they were killed, they came back to the United States and were still treated with a level of disrespect. And when you're fighting in World War I or fighting World War II, saving democracy, and then you're coming back to the United States and you can't even vote, will get the same level of basic services at the Veterans Administration Hospital. We have major problems. That's why I continue to advocate and support African-American veterans in our city and our country. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. This matter has passed. We are now moving on to the next late filed matter. Mr. Clerk, could you please read it into the record?
Late filed matter offered by Counselors Flynn and Counsel, Counselors Murphy and Flynn, emergency resolution to conduct, to call for an independent investigation into City Hall terminations, retaliation claims, and supervisory conduct.
Thank you. All in favor of adding this late filed matter to the record, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Is that, is that an objection to adding? Okay. This matter will not be added to the docket. We are on to the consent agenda. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are two additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. Obviously stated, Juneteenth is coming up next Tuesday at 12:30. We'll be raising the Juneteenth flag here at City Hall. My office put out a calendar of events around the city happening for Juneteenth, so hope to see my colleagues and community members there. This Saturday is the Pride Parade, starting, I believe, at 11 o'clock in the Back Bay, so hope to see everyone out there celebrating Pride. And on Sunday is the Bunker Hill Day Parade, starting, I believe, at 12 o'clock in Charlestown. So we hope to see everyone out. A reminder that after this meeting, we will have a lunch and learn with Roka, a lunch and learn with Roka, and will be catered, which will be catered by rhythm and raps. And then, oh, some happy birthdays. So I want to say some happy birthdays to Elsa Flores, Sidney Scanlon, Eddie Conley, our central staff director, Michelle Goldberg, who's celebrating this weekend, Corey Rain Tyler, and I guess Counsel Weber? Has a birthday coming up? Okay. Yeah, okay. So happy birthday. I did not know that. Happy birthday. There is no speaking from anyone. It's your birthday. Happy birthday, but there is no speaking from anyone in chambers. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. I want to speak on docket 0616. It's an up, I'm talking just about an upcoming hearing order that I'm looking forward to. It's been talked a lot.
Counselor Murphy, on a docket?
No, I'm not talking about the docket. I'm referencing that we have a hearing order coming up, and I'm hoping that we can maybe schedule it sooner than August 14th, because I have continuously talked about the need to discuss.
And Counsel Murphy, that's the one, it's the one in my office.
Well, if it's the only way I can speak.
You spoke, Counsel Murphy, you spoke on the docket. In order for me to be fair to all of my colleagues...
I'm not speaking on that docket.
And, yes, yes. Counsel Murphy, I'm happy to work with you on a sooner date, because that is in my committee. I'm happy to do that. I need to be fair across the board. Someone objected when you were speaking.
I understand, and I understand the rules.
And in order for me to send that to committee. And so if you're speaking on a docket, that is not for announcements. I'm happy to work with your office for a sooner date. That is no problem at all. Now during announcements, as I stated in the beginning, is not the time to speak on a docket. The chair recognizes Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor. Counsel Peppin has the floor. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor.
I don't want you to talk to like this, and I don't want other colleagues to tell me to sit down. I'm not being disrespectful.
Counsel Murphy, I did not tell you to sit down.
I didn't say you did.
What I stated was that announcements are to talk, not to talk on a docket.
I never said you did, Madam President. I never said it was you. It was another colleague.
Okay. I was trying to manage. I did not hear anyone else state anything. Counsel Murphy, I am happy to work with your office on this matter. Thank you. Okay. The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you. Sorry, I just, I would like to thank BPS, the Boston Arts Academy, and recognize the graduation that we have for my son this week. We had a wonderful graduation speaker and Counsel President Roucy Louie Jean. I don't know if we still have a quorum, but I, I'm just, you know, that graduation showed why schools like Boston Arts Academy are a great resource for our kids. All the performances, it was unlike any graduation I've ever been to, and I want to congratulate not just my son, but, but every kid and all the families who celebrated graduation that day. I heard there was another graduation for another school, which I'm not going to talk about, but that day, at Boston Latin School. Congratulations also to those families.
We all love each other. There's no rivalry.
And those parents, yes. No, no. I'd also just like to thank Alice Lucy Barrow's family for welcoming me into Alice's home in the Collins Apartments yesterday for her 100th birthday. We got to talk about how, as a young girl in France, she helped the French Resistance fight the Nazis, and other stories that were as interesting. I just thank you to her family for welcoming to the home, and I was glad to meet Alice. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Weber, and happy birthday. Your birthday is?
Someday in the future, yes.
Happy birthday, Counsel Weber. June 22nd. Happy birthday, Counsel Weber. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, when we see what's happening in our country with demonstrations in major cities, and a level of violence that's taking place, I think, in my opinion, what's important is we treat each other with respect in this body. We have to hold ourselves accountable in...
Counsel Flynn, I do agree with you that we have to hold each other in respect and high regard.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Do you have an announcement?
Yes, I do, Madam.
Okay, for an event? Okay.
Could I?
If you have an announcement for an event, please announce it, Counsel Flynn. Thank you. Okay. We are now moving on to memorials. Would anyone like to uplift the name of anyone who has passed? Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Counsel Braden, Louise Bonar. On behalf of myself, Tiffany Lamar. Carl Papa J. Johnson. On behalf of, also myself, Giancarlo Gian Gonzalez. A moment of silence. The chair moves that when the council adjourned today, it does so in the memory of the aforementioned individuals. I also just want to state, so we are clear, last term, there's actually a moment for almost a year where announcements were cut off. No one was able to make announcements, because people were using the opportunity for announcements